So, welcome everyone to the tri-town meeting that Lancaster is happy to host this evening. We have two agenda items, but beforehand, I'm Ryan McNutt. I'm the town administrator for Lancaster and this is my first tri-town meeting. So if there is a normal order of ceremonies, I would ask maybe a veteran tri-town attendee to fill me in.
Occasionally, we start the meeting just by going around the room so everybody knows who our town is, but aside from that.
Well, I sort of started that. I'm Ryan again.
Mark Sprig, Bolton, Board of Selectmen.
Don Lo, Bolton Town Administrator.
Stan Wysocki, Bolton Selectman.
Nicole Oder, High School Committee.
Michael Wood, Superintendent of Schools.
Bob Sikanski from Bolton. I'm the High School Space Needs Committee.
Lorraine Remosco, Bolton Rep for the school committee.
And Julie Fay Lancaster, Rep for the school committee.
Welcome, everyone. So, the first agenda item tonight is the Neshoba Regional High School Space Study Task Force update. Sure. Well, I'll take the lead, but I have two members here as well, so they can chime in on anything that I missed out. We've been meeting since last spring. We met a couple of times over the summer. We're in the process essentially data gathering and trying to find data that answers questions that we've posed. We have done site visits, which occurred in June, to a few high schools of similar size, curriculum offerings, program offerings as ours, to get an idea of what those buildings look like, to be able to offer those kinds of programs. Essentially, from the get-go, some members posed a question that, I'm paraphrasing, but essentially is, what does it take to, what kind of investment does it take to demonstrate student growth and ability to enter the colleges of choice and careers of choice that they want to get into that would aid us in that process? And so, we've been trying to find data that answers that question. It's very challenging. We've reached out to a couple of experts in the field and the data, the types of data would be what we'd expect, looking at college attainment, you know, whether or not they were able to finish college in a reasonable cohort of four years, whether they were able to get into their program of study that they wanted to get into, how they're graduating from our school, at what, you know, GPA, what level of educational experience they're able to get. And then, we're looking also at the program offerings that we have currently and we have plans for growing into, but space is mitigating that and making it difficult for us to grow those types of programs. One such area, for example, is some of our science offerings, and that was something that was an initiative a couple of years ago that we explored, so we have some data from that experience as our most recent experience. So, we're basically in that data collection stage. Our last meeting, we spent going over how to work with the MSBA, and we went through one of their worksheets to look at square footage and things that MSBA requires of schools to look at, and I explained that one of the requirements of any kind of initiative that the district would undertake would require a relationship with MSBA, so we would have to look at that and make sure that we understood what that entailed. In our most recent experience with MSBA is with the Center School Project in the town of Stowe, and so, and that went well, and so I think we have a good understanding of how to work with MSBA, and that's where we're at to date. I don't know if Lorraine or Bob want to add anything?
No, I just don't. I think that, like Michael said, we need to do more research. We don't have all the data that we need, and we're trying to figure out what that data is and where to get it in order to make any assessment or recommendation to move forward, not move forward, or what our options are. I think that's where we're at.
I think that's fair statement.
So, just to, like I say, pardon my ignorance, but I'm new. So, all options are on the table, like building a new high school from square one, adding to the existing structure, it's just, you guys are just really at the book of Genesis on it. Very much so, and I think, you know, that very initial meeting where we asked that question about, you know, what investment is worth doing that will get us that kind of return on investment, the educational progress that we're looking for? And, you know, we're still trying to mine the data to try to figure out, are there ways to answer that kind of question, you know, in everybody's experience in terms of communities building high schools or any school? It's because of some specific element of the school, you know, it's dilapidated, it's, you know, it's falling down around, it's physically too small. We have pieces of that, but nothing that would say, you know, that's the reason why we need to do X. I think that's part of... Except, I mean, yeah, okay.
Except for the fact that there are some needs at the high school.
There are.
So, that should not be thrown out, right? We all need to understand that there are some significant needs at the high school, but the result, what the resultant recommendation is, we don't have an opinion on that right now.
Fair enough.
I would assume that there are five some things from just an accreditation standpoint that you're going to have to do, just to...
And maybe.
Just to, you know, get it to where it sort of needs to be, and that might include the science...
Right.
Science rooms, the labs, etc. Then you have just physical plant. You're at, what, 1,000, 1,100 students now, and the capacity is somewhere around there or above, and, you know, if you did nothing else other than add classrooms, you'd need to add classrooms sort of capacity, then you have the cafeteria issue.
Right.
Right.
But, you know, Stan, the other thing is, there are certain programs that even the curriculum supports right now that are not well-poised to deliver on, you know, what we need, what Michael and his folks need to get out of that physical space. So, I think the science labs is the easy one, because we knew that was an initiative a few years ago.
Right.
But what is it about the science labs? It's not, we need a whole new 12 science labs, what is it about the science labs that supports the curriculum? And I think that's where Michael was going, is there are various elements, and there are reasons for the ask, there have to be reasons for the ask.
Right.
Mark Jones just walked in. He's also on our committee, he's from Stowe.
Hi.
Hello.
Did you want to sit up here as part of the group, or?
Sure.
Okay, so, I mean, were there, was there any other questions on this topic of the High School Space Study Task Force?
Do you have, what's the kind of the roadmap and schedule going, you know, to make some decisions and recommendations and...
Sure.
Since it's going to affect all our town budgets.
Right.
Immensely, you kind of need to know how that's going to play out.
Right. So, there are a couple of milestones. One is that we said we would do an interim report in the fall to our school committee, so we're trying, we have a draft of one, it's, I would say, very drafty, needs to be cleaned up and organized a little better. So, we'll be doing that this fall. There are a couple of decisions to make about the next milestones. We'll have to make some decisions and make recommendations to the school committee, and also depends on the MSBA. Their window for what they call the Statement of Interest process is usually in the winter. You'll recall, this was something that happened when we did the science lab initiative. People felt it came on suddenly, but it comes in December and they want the report back by January, and you have to kind of have that, and they close quickly. So, we'll have to make a decision whether or not we're in any place to get ready to go into that process. And they're adamant about that process, that it's just a process. You can apply, and it's just what it says. It's a statement of interest to do something and work with the MSBA. They can come back and say, "Okay, now tell us what it is you think you want to do," because they only want to know data. So, essentially, what we'd be giving them is our report, interim report. Then they'll come back and they'll start working with us and try to look at possible solutions with us. They want to be in on that process. They don't want us to come in and say, "Oh yeah, we need 12 science classrooms or labs." They want us to say, "We have X square footage and we believe we are, you know, three classrooms short of meeting the state, their guidelines for having the right square footage per student." But they may come back and say, "Well, tough," or, you know, "It's not enough really to do anything, and we're not going to partner with you." So, but they want to be at that very beginning process to do, and that can take years. I think with Stowe, we started with MSBA roughly about four years before we got to any final conclusion to actually get a project off the ground. So, this is quite some time away, then? Oh, yeah. Whatever it is. Right. Yeah. We just know that, like anything, it takes planning, it takes readiness. As we saw with the science lab initiative, people felt it was too soon and, you know, too much, too much information to digest, to also come to a resolution around it, and, you know, that tells you that you've got to step back and take a look and really have better data and communicate it better and get it out more publicly what the issues are.
Michael's right. Once you've partnered with the MSBA, they have a very, very structured, defined process that they go through, then they don't deviate from it?
So, I would not anticipate any cost-related, well, if we go with the MSBA, there will be, with the Statement of Interest in this cycle of year, one of the costs that we'd have to think about is, they require you to have what they call a project manager, but it really depends on when we started that process, to know when we'd have to put that into the budget. So, I'm not sure that's an FY16 budget item or an FY17 budget item. It's feeling now like more of an FY17, but we haven't even discussed that. I mean, as, maybe as part of that initial report in the fall, I mean, is there some type of baseline schedule of what, like maybe based upon previous projects, you know, other towns have done, that you would know sort of, like what is front-loaded in terms of costs? Like, having to do, you know, initial design plans to a certain, you know, degree, or this project manager? Right. And that may be part of the report in the fall, or that's still too early? That's probably a little too early. I think that once the school committee sees the interim report and gives us some direction as to which way they would like us to further the conversation, then we'll come back with the milestones based on looking at the MSBA's sort of steps, and they have them pretty well articulated. It's just like a minute.
I'm bad.
Those of you who have not met, this is Ryan Burke, Selectman from Stowe.
Oh, okay, very nice. I'm Ryan McNutt. I'm the town administrator for Lancaster.
Oh, nice to meet you.
This is my first tri-town meeting, sorry.
Well, this is not my first. If I was on the school committee, I attended many, especially in this room, but good evening, everyone. I apologize for being late. It was unavoidable, but I'm picking up as we go along.
Well, it's a pretty brief agenda. We just covered, essentially, if folks, unless folks have any other questions. We covered the first topic, which was the Neshoba Valley High School, I mean, the Neshoba Regional High School Space Study Task Force update, which is basically, there'll be a lot more information in the future.
Yes, I've been hearing about it. Sorry, Mrs., I won't ask anyone to repeat what went before, or maybe I can catch this one.
I totally just summarized it.
You've mastered your job very well in a short period of time.
So, the next item on our agenda is an update on the Neshoba Regional School District five-year plan progress. So, I'm not sure if the person who put that on here is here, so if they are, I could maybe answer more targeted questions, but they're not here. So, I'll talk in generalities. So, I wasn't sure if they were talking about our capital planning process or our district improvement planning process. So, they're, both have, they're rolling five-year plans. The school committee approves the district improvement plan on an annual basis, that's a requirement under statute, and they'll be working on that in the month of September. And the capital plan is approved as part of our school budget process, so we review that January through March, and the capital planning process is what we use for the three towns, so that they can see what the needs are, the buildings that they own, and then we have something called scheduled maintenance, which we're responsible for, for all of our schools, and then that includes what we do for the high school. So, that's a rolling plan that we build every, you know, review and build every year as needed.
Michael, within any of your five-year plans, however many you have, do you have any comments in there yet on, or any thoughts in there yet about how to deal with OPEB?
Well, we did take one step toward that, sort of, very quickly at the end of this past year, where we had some end-of-year money that the school committee decided to put towards OPEB, but it's in a holding pattern, because we, it happened rather quickly, it was something that, I forget who, one of the school committee members generated the thought, right? So, we have to do some background work and determine whether or not that needs to be a stabilization fund, what the process is for setting it up.
As our chairman Larry Delaney, who couldn't be here tonight, is, at some point in the fall, going to assemble a blue-ribbon panel to go off and make a recommendation on how we should start dealing with ours, so I was just curious as to how you were dealing with yours.
It's a drop in the bucket.
Well, we created the bucket, but we haven't put anything in it yet.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, if you're interested, and I extend this to Bolton as well, Lancaster just put a substantial amount of money set aside for our OPEB, and we just, our treasurer just designated the investment vehicle that we're going to store that money in. So, that process is something we've just undertaken, and I'd be happy to, you know, share that information or those individuals with you guys. So, you went through the process of having it approved by town meeting? Correct, yeah. Our OPEB liability is approximately $3, $4 million, and we just put $415,000 aside. Nice. Yeah. I mean, it was a one-time source of revenue, but, you know, but like I say, setting up where to put that money, because it wasn't in the traditional investment accounts that the town uses. We are using a special investment account for this money, so if that's what you guys are thinking of doing, like I say, our treasurer and financial director are doing that right now. What is the OPEB liability for the school district?
It's just over $11 million.
11?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's, I came from a city that it's 200 million.
Yeah.
So, 11 million, still not going to make my eyes bolt up.
Well, that's gross.
Oh, sure, no, I agree, and, I mean, it's still a lot of money, absolutely, but...
Congratulations, though. Seriously. To the town of Lancaster.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. Well, it was, it was a select, it was the select board, and it was a very wise and progressive Is there any other questions or comments regarding the, well, two five-year plans?
Well, actually, no, we've, it's come up in past tri-town meetings, where we've had some discussion about some of these third-party organizations that rank schools both nationally and within the state in terms of, you know, the 341 high schools and where they fall. We've talked about Boston Business Journal and Newsweek, which does nationally, as well as US News and World Report, which does nationally. We've had some discussion about that, where Bolton, more specifically, Neshoba, because those, the national ones typically rank the high schools. But then I also noticed on the Department of Education website, where they have these report cards, if you will, for the variety of schools, both districts, you know, elementary schools, high schools, etc. And then, you can get a brief report card, or you can get a more detailed one. And in all of them, they, the state, the Department of Education sort of ranks the school in terms of its proficiency against the other schools within the state. And I'm not, I confess, I, you know, don't know what goes into how they determine that proficiency ranking, but, you know, our high school has one, and, you know, there are other high schools that have other rankings, and in some cases, they somewhat fall in line with the local and national rankings in terms of where some schools stand. Maybe, maybe, obviously not for tonight, but maybe for the next meeting, it may be help to explain where and why the Neshoba Regional School District and high school ranks where it does relative to, you know, some of the other schools we've talked about, like Akron-Boxborough and Bromfield, where their proficiency rating seems to be a bit higher than ours, because, you know, we're taking a long and hard look at, you know, town valuation and why perhaps Bolton hasn't bounced back quite as much as some of the other towns, and, you know, a part and parcel of that could be when people who are looking to move either out of state or within state to another location, one of the things they look at if they have, you know, school-aged children are the rankings. You know, how does, how does the school rank against some other school? And, you know, while there's nothing definite that we can put our finger on that says there's a direct correlation, I think there is some correlation, you know, of that, you know, depending upon, you know, where, where our school district, and especially the high school, because that's in Bolton. It's not in Lancaster, it's not in Stowe, it's in Bolton, and maybe we can have a little bit of discussion next time about that, and, you know, as part of the five-year plan, are we looking at anything that's trying to get, you know, let's say, we're in the top 25%, some of these were in the top 25%, but we're at the bottom of the top 25%, that's, you know, that's what they're saying. Are we, are we looking at anything within these five-year plans that says, "Okay, well, you know, we're at X percent this year, we, maybe if we do this, that, and the other, we can get up another, get up another 5%, you know, and then the next year, another 5%," so that, you know, we're, so I don't know if that's part of your, part of your five-year planning and whatnot, but I think that's important, you know, one, from the perception of what, where the district is relative to other, you know, districts in Massachusetts, and I think that certainly will have an effect on town valuation, which really has nothing to do with the tax rate, but, but at the end of the day, it affects what my house is worth and your house is worth, so, you know, that's, that's where it makes a lot of, it makes a lot of sense.
Well, I can tell you, certainly our district improvement plan is all about making sure that our kids are improving in performance. I mean, it's all academically oriented. We studied those report cards very, quite in-depth, and, so, yes, I mean, we don't, the driver isn't necessarily, as you're describing it, to get us improvement in rankings, but it is to get the improvement in the individual student's performance, which would transfer into that, so, yeah.
Okay, well, maybe we can have that as a topic for the next tri-town.
And some of those things might be intangibles as well, like those rankings, like, whenever the determination of what you're going to do with this space needs study may have an effect on those rankings for one year or two years, you know, if you're, if this comes back and it says, you know, you're going to substantially remodel the high school and add space for new programmatic activities in the rankings, you know, whether that lags a year and they follow up the next year and incorporate that in their, in their thinking, I mean, you're, I think you would get a boost off of intangible things like that.
I don't know what goes into that number, you know, why is one school at 76% and why is another school at 93% or 97%? And, you know, that's, it's, the state's doing that, so it's like, what goes into that calculation that gets, gets to that number, you know? And it could be, could be the fact that, you know, maybe, you know, if we made improvements in the science labs and did something, then that's a factor that, that goes into one of those parameters in the very big equation that the state uses to crank out that, that number at the end of the day.
But I think most of it is very tangible. It's, you know, it's MCAS, it's, you know, SAT scores, it's, you know, AP, it's graduation rates, it's, you know, things that are very, very measurable. So, it's not just, you know, and it's not the, you know, it's not the inverse age of the, of the school building or anything like that, you know? So, you can have a very old building, but if you have very good results out of it, you know, it doesn't matter, so...
I'm just going to jump in on you, Ryan. Last year, I took a look at the methodology for some of the news outlets. I didn't look at the state, so I will go back and look at that, but I did look at it, and US News and World Report seems to be the one that everybody's really hanging their hat on and really basing a lot of decisions on, and they really look at reading and math indicators, similar to what you were saying. The levers are more tangible than they are intangible. They look at your special needs population, your low-income population, how well are they served, how are they performing against other employ, employee, that's my word, other student populations. So, it's very specific on what they're looking for, and it's not really just about how many AP classes you have, because I know there's some thought to, well, the more AP classes we have, the better we look. That's a piece of it, but that's not really the focus of it. That's, and that's a component of it, but I'll share this with you after the meeting, if you'd like to take a look.
Maybe one other thing, maybe look at it at a future meeting, is, you know, we talk a lot about school choice and kids coming into the district, but are we, are we looking at outflows? Why red kids in the three towns are going elsewhere, you know, as maybe one of those sort of factors of, which gets factored into the rank, I don't know, so, you know, but I mean, we talk about inflows, but we don't talk about outflows and what, what's driving, what's driving a family, a child, to send their, their child to a school that's not Bolton, Lancaster, or, you know, Stowe School.
Those are, that's a little bit harder, because the state doesn't allow us to survey those, the charter parents, so they can choose not to participate, you know, it's just a type of thing, but what we have been able to, it comes down to essentially three reasons. One is programmatic. They, they want to go to a school like Advanced Map and Science School in Marlboro, for example, because they want that total focus on a particular subject. So, it is, or they look at a school and say, "That's a philosophy of learning," for example, Devon's Charter, or the, for instance, Parker Charter School, for example. So, that, that's one reason. Another is, it's locale, the, one of the parents works there, and for whatever reason, they choose that as their, their reason to bring them, so that they can be closer to their child, and that's usually at the younger ages. And then, just lastly, it's, tends to, it can be a decision simply because of, you know, a circumstance, an event in their child's life that they want to break away from the current grouping of kids that they are with, and, you know, especially at K through A, it's a smaller group of kids, and sometimes, parents feel the best is to just get away for a couple of years, and, and we do get them back, you know, a good chunk of them for our high school experience. So, those are the three main that come to mind. So, you know, the, it's, it's a nice opportunity for parents in the Commonwealth to have that opportunity for choice, so...
There's some interesting statistics on the population, I think 75, no, I'm sorry, 50 kids are coming from Clinton, 25 are going to Clinton, so it's quite interesting going back and forth happening between the districts right there. Could be it's just easier to go to the Clinton High School for some population, and other population really just wants to come to Bolton.
Yeah. I mean, for example, you know, and this is more anecdotal, but, you know, some people like a smaller high school because they feel their, their ability to get courses or extracurricular programs are easier, because there's less competition for those slots, so those things do happen. We've also been joined by Lancaster's select member, Sue Smiley.
Thank you, Ryan. Sorry, apologize for your delay.
The last thing we usually talk about, even if it's not on the agenda, is the date and location of the next meeting, and Bolton is due to host the next meeting.
And Bolton is due to host the next meeting, so it would be at the Houghton Building on Main Street in Bolton. Normally, we do, I think it's the first Wednesday of the month, is it?
We've done in the past.
So, that would be, what, for, is that November?
Fourth.
Is it the fourth? Okay.
October.
Oh, October. Thank God. All right. Things are moving fast enough.
Would you say the first Wednesday?
First Wednesday.
Uh, that's, in October, it's the eighth.
Can't be the first Wednesday, if it's the eighth.
The first?
Oops. There's gotta be a one in there somewhere.
Oh, I'm sorry, the first, yeah, I'm sorry. The first is the first.
I would just put it, do people feel that we need to meet every month or is quarterly something more, or bimonthly, given everybody's schedules?
I might recommend that we see what would be generated for an agenda for next month and if it is, again, you know, two smaller items like this that we perhaps postpone for a quarter. But if they're, obviously generates agenda items, then that would substantiate having a meeting.
I just, a quarterly meeting would put us in December, which would be prime, early December, which would be prime, sort of before budget conversations so that, I know from the school perspective, we'd be able to talk about.
Well, we definitely want to meet in December, for sure. Yeah, I don't know what we have teed up for agenda items for October. I actually have tossed out in the past whether or not we need to meet monthly or if a less, if a less frequent meetings might generate more attendance and more, more topics. So, that's just, those are just my thoughts.
Well, we can plan by year, but, you know, let's, let's definitely plan for December if something comes up.
Yeah, that's good.
So, you know, maybe a week or so before October 1st, we could put out a call for agenda topics. And if we don't really get anything or if there's not, if there's little interest, then we can assume the first Wednesday in December.
Yeah.
I have a feeling that the people in my town are gonna be very interested in the new high school proposal and want to follow it closely. It, you know, I've been through one or two of these tri-town meetings before and I've had the same thought, but there's a, there's a, I think there's a, a good justification for giving every town the first three months of the school year their shot to let people come in and speak their mind, even if it's not public officials. And then, but in the spring, I agree with you, it starts to drag. Those are my thoughts. And we're geared up to host you all on November 5th. But we'll only extend the hospitality if you, if you want.
We can't just drop in?
Any, Mr. Superintendent, you have a standing invitation. Not only the town office building, but my home, anytime.
Well, I think we already have a first agenda item for October, which is following up on Stan's comment and having, and I guess part of that would be really you presenting kind of, you know, what the current five-year school improvement plan is and how it starts to address some of the, the issues with the rankings and that sort of, you know, student improvement to be able to improve our numbers there. I mean, I think that's the first agenda item and that, you know, hopefully is more than a 20-minute discussion.
I just, I just have a thought and, I mean, I've only been to two of these tri-town meetings, but it seems like the majority of the information here is about the schools. And we have school committee meetings twice a month and everyone's always welcome. So, I'm not, I'm just confused as to, to have another meeting in a month that's all related to the school committee meeting and as we know, everyone's always welcome to school committee. It's just a question of, you know, come to any school committee, everyone's always welcome.
But the issue with school committee meetings is typically the public comment is not allowed to be in.
Oh, we've moved it.
There's no public comment?
Oh, it's a free for...
There's no comment at all? I would get that out.
That's my knowledge, but as...
We've moved it to two hours.
Comments up.
Well, she moved it once when we were...
Re-jiggered along and doing, she was like, let's... I think when we knew that there was, there's a hot topic and the people are there for it, we...
We always involve them during the, the event of the topic.
And it's, the agenda's jiggered.
Yes.
To that, to, yeah, to come, yeah.
But I think, but I think the, I've been to those. I mean, there's more, I don't, don't take this for the wrong, but there's more minutia and more very, very specific kinds of things that are discussed, which may not necessarily be either value or relevant to, to this group here. Because I think a lot of it, what we're talking about is, you know, either school performance or school finances, well, obviously, the, the school building, there are a lot of other things that are discussed at school committee meetings that are important, are important, but not necessarily for...
And you're not constrained here by Robert's rules, right? Is that right? You're not constrained by...
Not Robert's rules, but it's not a...
But, by, right, right.
Okay. Just throw it out there.
And also, it hasn't happened the last few meetings, but in the past, we have had other kind of discussions between the different, the selectmen about, you know, a variety of different, you know, what are we looking at for, you know, or what do we, you know, what are, how do we deal with, you know, our contract negotiations or things like that? So, there are other things that are discussed at these, not just, it's just one of the few times we get, we get Michael here to, to put him on the hot seat a little bit.
So, we'll assume we're meeting in October unless we, unless people feel the agenda isn't robust, unless the agenda isn't robust enough, we'll, we'll assume we're meeting in October?
Yeah, in Bolton.
In Bolton. In the Houghton Building.
Okay, well, if there is no other new business, so to speak, if anybody has any other final comments or statements or questions they want to ask? Anyone? No?
It's good to be back at tri-town.
Very good. And on that note, this will conclude this meeting. Thank you all for coming and this was very interesting for me, for my first tri-town meeting. I definitely could see the value in them as, as the, as Mr. Low said, you know, this is an opportunity, or as the selectmen said, this is an opportunity, you know, I mean, for different, the, the three towns officials to be able to, you know, discuss and ruminate over, you know, shared headaches or...
Or joy.
Which is why the schools are...
Yeah, sure.